Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassia Common Council meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Taylor?
I'd like to take a moment of silence for Christina Beekler. Heard her husband Bob owned the Manassia Hotel from 1978 to 2008. They started in business in the 1960s and they bought the first condo on the river. They were at the groundbreaking ceremony. They each had a hard hat with Manassia on it. They were so proud of that. And then later, when they could do the steps on their waterfront, they bought a condo in the headwaters that was on one level. And she was a wonderful businesswoman along with her husband. They always donated to the Manassia Action Council and our different events in the community. And then I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize the Becker family and Bill Becker across the street. For 68 years, the family ran that business. And Bill was, as his obituary says, was a different person, but he was a caring and giving person. He enjoyed giving money to environmental issues like Huckert Wetlands, Thousand Islands, Nature Preserve. And he always donated to different events too throughout the city. So that family were right here on Main Street for 68 years. Thank you.
If we could have the roll, please.
Alderman Ted Grady.
Here.
Alderman Repella.
Present.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Here.
Alderman Savenik.
Here.
Alderman Langdon.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Tom Grady.
Here.
All are present.
Item D is public hearings. We have two public hearings tonight. The first is a designation of certain properties as blighted. Director Schrader, would you like to give us a brief synopsis?
Certainly. It feels strange tucked back in the corner here, though. All right. So certain designated property is blighted. We have 100 River Street and 198 River Street. This would be the former Whiting Paper Mill as well as the Simply Incredible Building. So basically, the consideration of blight, we did take this to the Common Council in early May to bring that forward for this consideration. So since that time, we've compiled the public hearing notices, the resolutions. We've notified the property owners as well as created that report. So that report is within the packet or included with that resolution. But basically, this blight determination is looking at these two properties. The Whiting Mill was obviously, had been vacant since 2016. And we had actually started to look at that blighting determination as kind of the starting point for the conversations to acquire that and to get that redeveloped. So again, at that time, we were working with a developer to repurpose that building. Since that time, it has clearly been blighted following the fire. So again, and then again, 198 River Street. I'm just looking at the general condition of that property as well, the overall growth and redevelopment opportunities of that area, the back taxes on both of those facilities is kind of a quick summary of why we are looking at that. And again, this is the commencement of the conversations to see the redevelopment of these areas. This is not using eminent domain at this time or looking at officially taking or acquiring this. That's not the purpose of these motions, to consider these as blighted. It is just to kind of move those forward in that conversation. Thank you.
Is there anyone for the public who wishes to speak on the blighting of this property?
Sandra DeBill Taylor, 545 Broad Street. It really is unfortunate what occurred at the Whiting Mill. And also, it's unfortunate that the Cranberry Company was not able to succeed. But I'm very concerned at the speed by which the city is moving on this. To be honest, we have other properties in the city that have been blighted for a very long time, including another fire that happened at another industrial property along the canal decades ago and is still sitting there. And the city doesn't own that property either, and we never did anything about it. In fact, I did a quick search of Winnebago County records, and there's over 914 properties in the City of Manassia that are delinquent on their taxes. So this is not unique. What I'm afraid of happening is that the reason that this is occurring is in order to fast-track it for the RDA to take it over. By state statute, under the blight determination and slum clearance, the redevelopment authority of any third-class city, which this is, may acquire blighted property without designating a boundary or adopting a redevelopment plan if all of the following occur. The authority obtains the approval, advanced approval, for the acquisition by at least two-thirds vote of the members of the local legislative body. That's you. And two-thirds approval shall be by resolution, and the resolution shall contain a finding that you do not think a comprehensive redevelopment plan is necessary. So to me, I think this is just, we're fast-tracking. We're trying to eliminate a lot of work that would have to go into play in order for the RDA to take this over. And at the last meeting, I did bring up, have we looked into grants? Have we looked into other means to pay for this? On the news right before I came, Hilbert received grants, two grants, that will cover 100% of demolition of a vacant cheese factory, the cost to exceed $700,000. And we're just going to hand over taxpayer dollars. We need to look at things a little closer. I just, I'm not saying that this needs to be done. I'm just saying, I think we need to take our time. I still don't know if the Fire Marshal ever made a ruling on the cause or if there's been any arrests of any parties that were responsible. Because even if they're minors, their parents could be held responsible, at least to some point. I don't, I think the taxpayers, we are in such dire straits anyhow. I think more needs to be done before we're looking at taking this over. And designating this as blight tonight, I think is just fast-tracking for the RDA. And then lastly, you will have a resolution later to expend dollars to do this, and that, I believe, because that's not a budgeted item, would also require a two-thirds vote if you approved it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this topic tonight? Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the second public hearing for the special use permit for Manassia Joint School District.
Thank you, Mayor. So basically, this special use permit in front of the Common Council tonight is for a small playground expansion, if you would like to call it that, for the school district. So this would be Maplewood School District, Maplewood Middle School up on Midway. And basically, the parking lot along the west side of the parking, or west side of the property in the building there is going to be expanded to include two basketball courts. This, the school district is within the property rezone or zone for single-family R1 that is permitted. However, our zoning code specifically calls out for any playground expansion that does require a special use permit. So again, this did go in front of the City Plan Commission. The City Plan Commission did approve that with one condition, that the stormwater management plan be reviewed prior to issuing permits on that. But again, did not object to or see any issues with this project.
With that, is there anyone who wishes to speak on this project? Seeing no one, we'll call the public hearing to a close. We'll move on to the Report of Department Heads, Staff and Consultants. We do have Stephen Rourke here this evening from RF Development to talk about his project on 140 Main update. Would you like to?
Good evening.
Sorry, you can't quite see Sam from the crowd, but...
I can't see Sam. There he is. Good to see you, Sam. My name is Stephen Rourke. I've stood before this Common Council two times since summer of 2019. I happen to live at 220 and 1/2 Main Street in Manassia. I walk up and down the street often. I dine and shop often in downtown Manassia. You might have all seen me down here on occasion. I acquired 140 Main Street in the summer of 2019 with a redevelopment plan in place and a budget in place. None of us were expecting a global pandemic. I was here in February of 2020, having fulfilled my obligation to one tenant of having her on the first floor of 140 Main, which is Manassia Market, and working with a second tenant for the second and third floors. On two different occasions, I had the building completely leased up. The first time in 2019, that particular tenant backed out for personal reasons. And the second time in February of 2020, and then the coronavirus hit, and that client no longer had interest in signing a lease. I was here 24 weeks last year, 19 without my wife Amanda. For those of you that have met her, you know that I spent every day with her, and so it was very difficult to be here for 19 weeks without her. But I had an obligation to the city, to the citizenry and to my tenant to continue to work on 140. Currently, the first floor is completely occupied. Kim Massey started with the southern portion of the floor, and now she's moved into the northern portion as she gains more vendors through our combined joint effort. We're traveling far and wide from as far away as Green Bay to Milwaukee, talking to potential vendors as well as potential tenants for the second and third floor. The plan has changed slightly from my original conversation with the city. At the time, the second floor was going to be a co-working space and the third floor an event space. I still hope to find a tenant for the second floor as a co-working space. I want it to be an incubator. I want to bring a lot of small businesses in, have them have a small office, a small footprint, work with them through, with accountants, attorneys, tax experts, help them grow their businesses so that they can move out into larger office space in downtown Manassia. The third floor, I don't see the need anymore, like I saw when I first arrived, to turn that into an event space. The new plan is to turn it into a maker space, Manassia Makers. What we will have on the third floor will be artists that will make things to be sold on the first floor within Manassia Market. That's the plan. That's why I'm here. I've already been here seven weeks this year. I'll be here through August the 31st. So I'll be here 20 to 24 weeks again this year. That's the plan with 140. I have other plans, other initiatives. I've done things since I arrived. I'd be happy to share all of that with you at the farmer's market on Thursdays, where I'm there every Thursday from 10 to 7:00. I'd prefer not to waste your time talking about that tonight at Common Council, but I'd be happy to share that with you on a one-on-one basis at any time at your convenience. Having said that, I'm willing to answer any questions. And so I turn it over to you, Mayor.
So do you want to have questions for Mr. Rourke? Alderman Savenik?
So you claim that you had signed tenants. If that's the case, how is it that they came back out of an agreement?
That's a good question. Thank you. We were at the point where we were drafting lease agreements, near the final version. We never got to the final version and never got to a signature.
So then you didn't have any?
I, we were drafting documents with attorneys involved.
Okay.
Alderman Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things you had mentioned in purchasing of your building was to do the facade over. And the facade of that building still doesn't have adequate signage or information that really gives any indication. There's still people that say, where's that Manassia Market? And you should at least have some drawings or designs. You can do those during COVID without any helpers. I still think you don't follow through that well with what you say you're going to do. I was part of the Manassia Market with Kim Massey.
Right.
Getting all of that stuff set up when she was getting ready for the opening in December. And you would always come in and change all the plans. The three design people that worked for her got very upset and told Kim to keep you out of the building because every time you came in, you, well, one day it was going to be Shakespeare in the doorway of, between the spaces. So you just kept coming up with all these ideas, all these ideas, and you never put anything into action. So I'm not sure where you are and what you're really doing here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, and I will address it. Kim and I were trying to get very creative on the first floor. She knew that she did not have enough vendors to fill the whole floor. Part of the reason the dividing floor exists is because Kim was going to take the southern portion of the building, and the Soos perspective was going to take the northern portion of that floor. There was a point in time when the gentleman who is the owner of the Soos artwork and has subsequently moved into a new location, he decided he didn't want to be at 140 because he wanted to control his own front door. He didn't want a shared doorway, and he didn't want a common space where people could be shopping and come into his space. So it was, I was told, it wasn't directly to me, that he did not want to be in that space because he felt like his artwork was at risk because he didn't have the only key to the front door of the building. And that's why he wanted a different location where he could control the entrance way. To get creative, Kim and I talked about a lot of things. We talked about having that north room be the event space until we completed the event space upstairs. We talked about book readings and book signings, and my wife's a Shakespearean-trained actor. We talked about having some small Shakespearean readings in there, nothing out of the ordinary in an event space. I continue to try to be creative. If someone, if anyone here at Common Council has any idea about who might want to sign a lease on the second or third floor, I'd love to hear from you. I'm certain you have a business development department that reaches out across the country to try to find businesses and industries to move to Manassia. I'm certain there's a journal or a call log that you could share with me, and I'd be happy to follow up with all of those people to see if they want to be tenants in my building or other buildings downtown. I'm not selfish. I'm not selfish because I am the one that brought Bare Bones to Manassia from Oshkosh. I bought my bicycle from Dan Drangoli off of Craigslist. I encouraged him to bring Bare Bones to Manassia because I knew there was a garden there for dogs, and he loves dogs. I'm not selfish. They can come into my building or they can come into someone else's building. To address the facade, I'll be happy to address that as well because I'm as confused as you are. I had, there was an initial review of the facade, and we had a general contractor, and we had an estimator, and we had an architect. The architect drew some renderings, and the estimator gave us a budget. When we went back to the general contractor to try to have them execute on that budget, it turned out that that budget was inaccurate, that someone didn't fully appreciate how that building was designed, constructed and maintained. Upon further, and that was the presentation that I made to the city initially. It was the same rendering but in six or seven different colors, and I was going to choose the color based upon what the city color was or the high school or the tenant even. You know, I was, I just got here. I didn't know what colors you'd want it to be, so I told the architect to pick out six or seven colors. But it was the same basic rendering in six or seven colors. What I found out upon further review is that the building is, the facade of that building is a lot more complicated than I realized, than the architect realized, than the estimator It was told to me that those narrow mullions on the front of the building could be easily removed, patch where they were, paint it, stain it, color it, seal it, whatever. I was told it was a relatively easy job and relatively inexpensive. Turns out, each one of those mullions is hinged into the frames of the windows. So you can't just take them off easily. You've got to unhinge them from the window frames and remove all the window frames because now you've disrupted that envelope of the window frames. So then you've got to replace all the windows and then all the facade. At the end of the day, the best estimate, the best advice I've received and the best estimate I received regarding that facade, don't touch it. If you're going to touch it, remove everything and replace everything at a cost of $450,000 to $500,000 because of the design, because of the construction and because of the maintenance. That rough stone work has had some sort of sealant put on it, so I can't just go in there and stain it and try to beautify it. I'm working on that. I'm working on that, Tom. It's part of the reason why I'm here. It was mentioned earlier that I am Stephen Rourke with RF Development Group. That is no longer the case. RF Development Group remains active in name only because I am due some reimbursements, some monies that I spent for pre-development for some other projects. Once I am reimbursed, RF Development Group will no longer exist in any shape, form or fashion. I have formed a new development group because of all the projects I have going on in the state of Wisconsin, the upper Midwest and nationally. Through my friend Kim Massey, I was introduced to someone who I will not mention, who introduced me to Hoffman Planning, Design and Construction. Together, we talked about projects that we could work on using my Wall Street finance expertise and their planning, design and construction expertise. We worked together, we joint ventured, and we reached a point where we thought, where we knew it was best that we just form a new company, design, build and finance, their talents plus my talents. So here in front of the public, I'd like to announce the fact that Hoffman Development Group is a new company formed in Wisconsin with an office in Appleton and an office right here on Main Street in Manassia. Hoffman Development Group will have an office official in 140 Main Street once we build out the second floor. I'm a little off-topic, but I just wanted to clarify that for the record. I am Stephen Rourke tonight, standing up representing myself as an individual. I bought 140 Main because I saw it as a way to give a building back to the community, take a city hall building, redesign it, redevelop it, give it back to the city as a gift. It's got artists on the first floor, incubator on the second, some sort of community space on the third. Profit, that's my second motive, not my first motive. And that's because that's what I do, I give. I've told you, I've told some of you in private, by choice, me and my wife have no children. So all we can do is give back to the communities, and that's how we leave our legacy. We don't have a family tree. We don't have children and grandchildren and future generations. For us, it's what we do today, what happens on our clock today, not what happened last in 2019 when I bought the building, not what happened in 2020 when we were fighting through a global pandemic and I was locked in my apartment in New York City, talking to the mayor and talking to Sam on the phone. 1,400 people dying out there every day. I talked to the mayor and I talked to Sam. I'm like, I'm not comfortable coming back right now because if, if, if there's a major outbreak in Manassia, people could look at Stephen Rourke and say, that guy brought it from New York City. 1,400 a day, it doesn't take long to wipe out a city population of 17,000. So even though I was careful last year on how I traveled back and forth, I had to quarantine for two weeks before I got on a plane, come here, quarantine for two weeks before I could come work on my building. Even with all of that quarantining, I was still able to make it out here three times, three trips in 2020 for a total of 24 weeks, knowing I was putting my life at risk, not knowing what the risk was on getting in an airplane. I'm here, people. Nobody's going to run me off, not with pitchforks, not with axes, not with shovels. I'm here. And you know, I, that's it. Next question, Mayor. Did I, did I address your question?
Yes, sir.
Everything is still a priority. I'm working through it. I helped orchestrate the purchase and sale. I helped orchestrate the acquisition of 130 Main Street, the bank building next to mine. I did not broker it. I am not a broker. But I put the owner in Texas directly in touch with someone who had interest in Appleton because I told them to buy it. I said, buy this building, come look at Manassia. This particular gentleman had a 27-year-old son that lives in Appleton that had never in his life been to Manassia, Wisconsin. Why is that? Are we not promoting even to the people of Appleton why they should come to downtown Manassia? 27 years old and he's never been to Manassia. I couldn't believe it. I've visited every town I can within two and a half hour driving distance of Manassia. Something, something, something has to be done to attract people from Appleton, from Nina, from points far away. I'm here to help. I'm here to do anything I can. I have some ideas. I'm certain the city does. I'm certain you have some tools that I can utilize. I will get to that point. I'm sorry. I want to make certain you're addressed. I'm working with my new development company and my new design team in collaboration with the new owner of 130. We are in a co-development agreement with the owner of 130. We are co-developing that. The plan is to have a restaurant on the first floor, apartments on the second and third floor, and a fourth floor added as well, which will be residential. We're working through the design elements on that building. We were given the mandate by the new owner to make it the best residential building in Manassia. So we're talking about high-end market rate, bumping up against, bumping just up there to the luxury mark, but not quite. We don't want to overprice the market. The conversation is that we're going to take some of those design elements from 130 and apply them back to 140. So there's some consistency with, on this end of Main Street, this side of Curtis Reed Square, and everyone thinks that that's a great idea and a great plan. Now, what's my calendar look like? There are tenants currently in 130 Main Street. Their lease is run through November, so no work will begin on that project until December at the earliest. We have to be respectful of the existing tenants. The plan is to start work as quickly as possible. Then I'll know what I'm going to do with my facade. Sorry about the long-windedness.
Alderman Repella has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Rourke, just scuttled about around the city. What are those, the cell towers? Explain the cell towers and how you're, are you getting rent from those or how, just explain that to us. Thank you, sir.
That's a good question. I bought the building. My former partner was given some contact information by someone within the city about the cell tower owner-operator. I don't know all of the details. A lot of that conversation happened here locally without me. That cell tower revenue stream has been sold. 100% of those revenues were reinvested back into 140 Main. Almost all of it towards asbestos, which I mentioned to you when I stood before you last June or July, and the de-electrification of the first floor, all things that we didn't know existed until we started the demolition process. So those monies went towards getting the building to the point where we could even begin the redevelopment work and the tenant improvement work.
Okay. So you're, so you sold the rights to the tower, you're not a monthly... You're not a monthly, you don't get a monthly stipend or anything. Now you just sold it outright?
Yes, I did.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
The building did, I did, yes.
Got it. Understood.
Okay.
Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. You purchased the building in the summer of 2019, correct?
Yes.
Is the first floor completely finished?
Yes.
Completely.
Well, it has a certificate of occupancy and a tenant, completely. I'd like to make a few more improvements to the bathroom, but it's not a, it's not the type of tenant that had, that requires public access like a restaurant or an adult beverage establishment. It's a retail store. So the bathrooms are really for the employees, and we all agree that they're sufficient right now. If at some time in the future we are having events in the north room instead of vendor space, then they would need to be improved because then the public would be needing them on a regular basis.
So we can say mostly finished?
99%.
Okay. How about the second floor?
Both, both tenants that I was working with for the second floor had similar build-out interests, tenant improvements. Each of those budgets was $45,000 to $50,000, mainly beautification, removing a couple of walls, adding a couple of walls, minor upgrades and improvements, which I was willing to pay for once they signed the lease. It is build-a-suit, so I don't do any work until I have a tenant because I don't know who I'm building it to and for what reason.
So the second floor is not complete, then?
No.
And the third floor?
The third floor has been completely gutted. It is ready for, for tenant improvements once I have a tenant signed up with a lease. We ran into some issues up there through discovery process that there was a lot more asbestos in that building than what was originally indicated in the study that I received from the city. All of that's been remediated, removed, the beams have been cleaned, you know. I had to go through the third floor twice. The first time I did not remove everything from the beams. It was not asbestos, it was just foam because I was going to drape the ceiling. So I went to the expense of gutting it once, bringing the architect and designer in and say, we need to drape it now and fireproof it. And then they said to me, oh, well, you understand if you drape the ceiling, you've got to put two levels of fire suppression now, one above the drapes and one below the drapes. That wasn't in my budget because I've draped ceilings before and I never in my life had to fire suppress both sides of the drapery. So I had to go through a second time, which was delays, and, and have it cleaned to a greater extent because I wasn't going to fire suppress it twice just to drape the ceiling. So instead, I went through a second time and just cleaned it out entirely. But it is, it's ready for, it's ready for tenant improvements as soon as someone signs a lease with me.
So the first floor is mostly completed?
Yep.
The second floor is not finished, and the third floor is not finished either. You discussed the facade, which is the front of the building, which in the purchase agreement, I believe you said that it would look more like the Chute Street side of the building where the mural is. Correct?
We were taking some of those color elements, yes.
So I have a, we have a building that was, that you purchased in 2019, and that is majority not completed.
That's one way to say it. I would say it's, I would say it's 100% ready for tenants and tenant improvements once I have tenants for the second and third floor.
Okay. And so far, we've been, you've been unsuccessful in finding tenants. Granted, there was a pandemic and we all understand that that happened. What I, what I have trouble understanding is that you are experienced in this realm. You mention all the time that you've done this in New York, across the country, you're involved in different things, and around the state of Wisconsin as well. So it's, it's hard for me to grasp why this project is taking so long to complete. I was conducting, being a part of city council meetings from my basement for an entire year via the internet. And so I don't understand why there weren't plans being made while people couldn't be together physically in one space to take care of that building. And when, when you say that you want to help, that you're here to help, the very first thing I think that you can do to help Manassia is to get that building done and get it filled. Very first thing, number one, before starting more projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols, and I'd be happy to address that as well. Redevelopment and adaptive reuse of old buildings, you often find things with ghosts and witches hidden in corners and above dropped ceilings and underneath carpets. You do the best that you can to predict the proper contingency in your timeline calendar to address those issues, which we did. We had a calendar, we had a budget. We ran into a lot of issues, but I'm not here to look back, I'm here to look forward. You know what those issues, you know, you're quite familiar with what some of those issues were. At the time, the state was stretched on inspectors, so the inspector wasn't able to come by as often as we had scheduled that to happen. Responses from the state level were very slow as well. We were expecting turnaround times of two weeks, and sometimes it took two months to get a reply from the state. There were subcontractor issues during the coronavirus where the general contractor could fight, not find the right team or the appropriate team to do the work. Because of some of the issues that we found in the building, some of the work had to be done more than once. I'm familiar with this, you're right. I was here in 2019. I had the building fully leased before December of 2019. I was here for Bazaar After Dark with the tenant that was going to be in the second and third floor. So we had fully budgeted out what we were going to do for the second and third floor before Bazaar After Dark. I don't remember the exact calendar date. That tenant pulled out at the last minute for personal reasons, which I have no real knowledge of, so I won't expand on it. Immediately began looking for another tenant, and I found one in February, in February through the assistance of Pfefferly. Sitting in downtown Manassia in February of 2020, we had an understanding of what that lease was going to look like, and we had an agreement, and we were working with our attorneys drafting a lease agreement. February of 2020, New York City announced that they were shutting down. I was not in New York City on 9/11. I remembered what happened when the city said, we're shutting down. It meant bridges and tunnels and ferries. After 9/11, I was locked out of New York City. I could not even get back to my own apartment. When the city said, we're locking down for the coronavirus, I was expecting the same. So I booked an immediate ticket back home to make certain I got to my wife before I was told maybe I couldn't come back for months or a year. In New York City in March, I heard from the broker and the tenant that because of the coronavirus, they were no longer going to proceed. You're right. I've been in communication with everyone via phone, via Skype, via Zoom, trying to find a tenant for the second and third floor. And I still am. Currently, there's over 200,000 square feet of commercial and retail space available in Manassia alone, over 200,000 square feet. There is oversupplied like you would not believe and little to no demand. 200,000 square feet is 112 foot per resident. Every resident could hold, have their own 10 by 12 office right now in downtown Manassia, and you would still have extra office space for others that might have interest. That's the challenge. Through all of this, Discovery Point became vacant. What's that, 38,000 square feet? One Manassia center? Employees only come in one day a week and they're rotating, so that building's 80% vacant. The McLean Building, he's had square foot since I arrived in 2019. Go on LoopNet, talk to Pfefferly, talk to other brokers. Over 200,000 square feet in Manassia, that's my competition. So when I'm talking to someone, they're, they'll always remind me that someone else will offer them space for less. It's a challenge, Ms. Nichols.
So you've changed the plan before, so why not ditch that and make the second and third floor apartments? Just change the plan altogether. There's a huge demand for housing.
I'm working on housing projects, thank you. Have you ever redeveloped a project and turned a commercial building into residences?
I'm here to ask you questions this evening.
I think it is, I think it is, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that we can both ask each other questions. Have you ever redeveloped a building, adaptive reuse, poured concrete building built for a, as a bank into apartments?
You mentioned before that you're thinking forward, looking ahead.
Yeah.
So when could we expect the rest of the building to be leased out and for the facade improvements to come, to be completed? What's your timeline?
I'm here to make it happen. My timeline is I would love to have tenants tomorrow.
By the end of 2021?
I can't make you any assurances or guarantees. As I said, there's 200,000 square feet out there looking for tenants. I'm one man with 8,000 square feet out of that 200,000. I'm going to every city, I'm going to every conference, every meeting, every school district meeting. I went to Rawhide to their fish fry on Friday night, last Friday. I'm going everywhere I can and talking to everybody I can, telling them the story of Manassia and how it's being revitalized and how we're calling it Greater Manassia, not the other nickname. I don't know why I'm being called out. 24 weeks here last year and probably the same this year as a New Yorker, calling this now my second home. Is that my breath or somebody else's? It might be mine, sorry.
That's true.
Yeah.
Alderman Sodnik.
I appreciate you coming this evening. I also appreciate your passion and your, your passion for the city of Manassia and hope you continue that. And you have to understand, maybe these were tough questions from some of us, but that's our job. And we want you to keep moving forward and do the best you can, and hopefully down the road, you'll get lucky, we'll get lucky, and we'll have something positive here. So don't leave tonight feeling, you know, bad or whatever. You shouldn't do that. Leave tonight feeling more determined.
Thank you. You, you've supported me in the past by just walking up to me and saying thank you for my presence. We haven't spoken much beyond that, but I appreciate your support. You were the gentleman that was nodding at me last June or July behind, from behind the mask. I appreciate, appreciate your support, yours as well. You're a special asset to me and Kim, and as are the rest of you, just some of you, some of you I know better than others. James Taylor stopped me at the Manassia Farmer's Market last Thursday and said, can we sit for just a moment? We sat down at the public table right in the middle of the square, nothing private, everybody could hear what we were saying. He just wanted a reiteration of my passion and my interest and why I'm here and just wanted to know that it was for the right reasons. And I told him, nothing's changed from the time I arrived in June of 2019. I was born on a farm in Georgia and I can't go home. Some of you know why, and the rest of you, it's not that important to know why. But the way that you survive New York City is get back to the farm as often as you can. This is our second home. We're dedicated. We're here to the end. I promised the mayor and I promised Sam 10 years of my life once I bought the city hall building. Now that I have partnered with Hoffman Planning, Design, and Construction to form Hoffman Development Group, I have pledged to them the rest of my life until I die. One of my favorite songs is Jiminy Cricket, where he talks about living to be 103 years old. I'm 61. If I live to be 103, I think I will have done my service to the city of Manassia. Okay? I've made a lot of friends. I've started five businesses. I bought one building, I've put offers on homes. I, I negotiated the purchase and sale of 130 Main to friendly hands. We're co-developing that. We're looking at other properties, other buildings. I'm talking to owners. I won't talk anymore about me, but I want to offer the city a cautionary statement if I might, if I may. Because I live on Main Street, a lot of people talk to me who own buildings on Main Street, have businesses on Main Street, frequent Main Street. I'm hearing some rumblings. I'm hearing that some businesses right now on Main Street are going to be put up for sale or closed permanently. It could be as few as three businesses, it could be as many as five. If we don't all get very aggressive on bringing new businesses to downtown Manassia, this could be a ghost town by the end of the summer. That's why I'm here for the whole summer, to make certain that doesn't happen. If you know of any grants that are available, low-interest loans, please reach out to the local building owners and business owners. I know I didn't qualify because my companies weren't formed in time to qualify for a lot of these funds that are available, but some of these other people have been here longer than me. I remember when Jeff Boozer came here and bought four buildings. He tells me it was a ghost town, that's why he came here. He was one of the sparks. There has been many sparks in Manassia. I'm not pretending to be the first. I just happen to be the guy that's standing here right now. What's going to happen on my clock? What's going to happen on your clock? Do you want Manassia to be a ghost town while you are a member of the common council? I don't think so. So I'm here to help you, each and every one of you. Please help us. Okay? We need foot traffic, we need pedestrians, we need apartments, we need density, we need marketing, we need promotion, we need advertising, we need people dialing foreign-wide to encourage businesses and people and tourists to come to Manassia and the Fox River Valley. Okay? That's just a cautionary statement. Could be a ghost town by the end of summer. You know where I live? I'm going to give each and every one of you my business card before I leave so you've got my direct cell number. I'm not hiding from anybody. You can knock on my door, you can call me. Mayor.
Merk had something at his wake. Thank you so much for coming tonight, Stephen, and, and, and let us know where you're at and, and to get, you know, some tough questions from some aldermen. But I just wanted to say thank you, and I hope everyone realizes that, and I'm scared after you mention that because my comment is that life after coronavirus, the pandemic, is not going to be the same as life before the pandemic. And by the way you're talking is, that's the reality, and we need to start looking at it that way. Things are not going to be the same. They're already not. They're already not. I go to the Appleton YMCA, wide open, everything off. You know what? People still aren't coming back. Life is not going to be the same as it was before, people. And so I thank you very much for as hard as you are talking to people, and I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Mayor, if you'd don't mind. Is it on? Okay. Thought you turned me off. Thank you very much for that. I wish I had said that on the record, because that's what I was thinking. It just got lost because I had so many other things I had to say as well, but thank you. Life is different. We don't know what that difference is going to be yet. We're still all trying to figure it out. To Ms. Nichols' point, turning it into a residence, maybe that's what I will have to do at the end of the day. The third floor will be my private residence, four thousand square feet, and I'll put my best friend on the second floor, four thousand square feet. Maybe that's what we do at the end of the day. All things on the table, all options.
Stephen, thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate the story and your efforts, and we'll be looking forward to working with you more as we move forward.
Thank you. May I hand out my card to everyone before I leave?
Sure, if you want to, or if you want to bring them to both ends, we can pass them along through, too.
I like personal.
It all works.
Thank you. I know I'm taking up a lot of time, Mayor. I don't apologize for it.
It's okay, thanks.
You don't have my card yet either, do you?
Not this one.
You're welcome. We're all here for the same reason. Good to see you again, Dan. I told people that people would think of James and I as brothers. We have the same hair. All right. Thank you all.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to the minutes and communications. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevanik?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to receive Minutes A through H and Communications I through K.
Is there a second?
Second.
So motion is second by Alderman Langdon. Do we have any discussion? Go ahead, Stan.
Mayor, if you would, would you, I see on here we have the library board, could you introduce our new library director that's here today?
I'm sorry, I, for some reason, thought Brian had been here already, but Brian Kapetsky is here this evening, way in the very back row. And Brian, if you'd like to introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about your history as well.
Yeah, so this is my first. I attended one virtual meeting, but this is my first in-person, so just starting my second month here. Well, actually, I'll be starting my third month here at the library. And not to extend things too much, but I grew up here in the area. We're looking to move back eventually. That process is going a little bit slower than I would like, because the housing market is doing very well in the area, and unfortunately, that makes it a little more difficult to find a place that works well for my family and I. But we are definitely intending to move back into the area here, and we've got a lot of, what I'm hoping will be good ideas for the library, and you'll be hearing from us in the library board soon. So thank you very much.
Brian, could you just take a peek and walk in by the box so people can see you?
So I'd just like to add that Brian's been working very collaboratively with many of our department heads, and we're looking forward to some neat collaborations with Park and Rec and Health Department and others as we move forward. So it looks like it's going to be a really great fit as we move forward. Do you have anything else, Stan?
I do. Hold on a second. I forgot my mouse, and I'm not good with this. Forget it. So anyways, Mayor, can we discuss a little bit about the redistricting timeline?
Director Schrader can address that?
Yes, and I see Alderman Nichols' lights on, so we already kind of discussed this a little bit this morning. So basically, with the census, obviously, 2020 was the census year, so the data was collected. However, due to COVID again, the U.S. Census Bureau did not release the information as we intended. So typically, we would receive that in March, and then there's certain statutory requirements that give each step a certain timeline to meet the needs and evaluate the data and then get into the redistricting. So what we are kind of hearing, and one of the things I do want to make sure I point out, is that the memo is drafted as if that legislation was approved. It was approved by the Assembly, but we wanted to provide it as a communication that, to make sure this was on our minds. But basically, what we're hearing is that we might not hear or get the data from the federal government until this fall, hopefully around September. Between September and December, it would be impossible for each entity to take their sixty days to meet the requirements. So with that, there's a lot of discussion right now, and obviously, the recent legislation that is being proposed, how to resolve that. Do we push it back a year? Do we try to push it forward? Obviously, the Assembly right now, and the legislation that's out there, is to look at pushing that back. So that's, I guess, all I'll say right now, and I'll let some other questions be added.
Thank you, Mayor. Following up on that, you mentioned that the proposed legislation has only been approved by the Assembly at this point, correct?
Yes.
Yes, and so there is not a law, as of today, that outlines the steps for redistrict, the dates for redistricting yet, correct?
Correct.
In fact, in order for the bill to become law, it still has to pass the Senate and be signed by the governor.
Correct.
So as of today, really, all we know is that redistricting will happen, that the information from the U.S. Census is delayed, and we are still awaiting instruction on how the process and when the process will proceed.
Yes.
Thank you. I was very concerned when I saw this memo, because it implied, it says that the legislation has passed, when that is not the case. And with such redistricting and elections being hot-button issues, it's really important that what we intend to say is what we say, and that we don't provide and put out information that is not accurate. So if there's some way to correct this in the next packet to make sure that we have and the community has the right information about the process, or the dates at least, if there are any, the legislation, then that would be appreciated.
Certainly. And again, with the ultimate, when we saw the updated email from the state on this, we initially, I know, we sent some emails out to the clerk and to the city attorney and said, we really need to, we haven't done it yet, we need to provide a communication to the council. And that was the goal, and I apologize about how this is taken. I know earlier on, it notes, you know, presented and, you know, set forth the following timeline, but I do understand how that is taken, and so we can work internally to see what we can do.
I think the point being is that redistricting is something that would normally occur right now, as, you know, in this month and next month.
Yes.
But because the information is delayed from the census, it is not, and we don't know yet when it will happen, but the city will go through the process.
Yes.
Thank you.
Alderman Grady?
Thank you. Mayor, I just wanted the public to know that a winner was picked from the Landmarks Commission trivia contest. It was Valerie Newman, who won a hundred-dollar gift card for new businesses downtown Manassia, including 140 Main. So, thank you.
Seeing no one else, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Item F is public comments and any matter of concern to the city. Is there anyone who wishes to speak?
Hello again, Sandra DeVill Taylor, 545 Broad Street. I'm changing what I'm going to talk about tonight, but I first wanted to bring to your attention, prior to this year and perhaps last year, the agenda, the Order of Business, used to have the public comment prior to accepting the minutes and communications. Because what I'm going to say now has already been passed and approved. So one of the things was that there are minutes that were approved. Those meetings were held last week. Board of Public Works, you won't approve that meeting minutes until later tonight, yet the council just approved them. Landmarks met last week, Plan Commission met last week, and the Redevelopment Authority. You all approved their minutes, yet those individual committees have not approved their minutes. So I'm questioning, you kind of jumped the gun on that. Then, under Communications regarding the census update, I attended a lot of meetings last week. One of those was the comprehensive plan meeting, and one of the questions was raised on if the census data would be available and incorporated into the land use and transportation chapters, and they were assured by the consultant that they would be. But according to what was said tonight, that information is not going to be available at the earliest until September, and those chapters will already be written. I do think, and I agree with Alderman Nichols from two weeks ago, that this comprehensive plan is being rushed forward, and it's not being comprehensive. We're only doing two chapters. I don't know how you can do it without including housing and all the other chapters. And another thing that was brought up at the comprehensive plan was our downtown. And I do not personally know Mr. Rourke, but I appreciate him coming tonight, and we have challenges in our downtown. We always have had challenges in our downtown, and we've had a major problem trying to encourage the development of a bid district or getting the business owners on board to market themselves. The city has no marketing plan, so when someone from Appleton doesn't know what we have downtown Manassia, it doesn't surprise me. People from Nina don't come downtown Manassia. And I know it's very frustrating to see empty storefronts and vacant buildings down here, and I hope that the efforts going on at 140 and 130 Main Street come forward. I do understand the frustration with the council, but I, as a taxpayer, have been really frustrated with the Brin site and the Bonta site. They used the same excuse of COVID. Then they used the excuse they didn't have financing. Now it's environmental cleanup, but I don't hear anyone hollering at them. So let's be fair about it. Shopko buildings vacant, there's a lot of vacant properties, there's a challenge all over. But on the bright side, while COVID does exist, and it's going to be, I believe it's going to be a short-term challenge, five years. Because I look back at the 1918 pandemic, followed by the roaring twenties, where the twenties was the biggest influx of capital in the country at that time. Times have changed, things have gone electronic, and people want to stay home, but business, and you can tell just in festivals and things that are going on, they're mobbed, because everybody wants to get out, everyone wants to see things, and all these events are going to require places to hold them. So I think I will end it with that. Other than one quick one, I noticed that Nina has changed their summer hours for the office, for the City Hall, seven-thirty to five. We are eight to four. It's a real challenge for people who are working still daytime hours, if they want to get a permit or something, to come before work, after work, you're closed. It's something that you should consider. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Seeing no one else. I did just want to make a comment here. The minutes that are on the agenda in this section are draft minutes, and we're receiving them, we're not approving them. The committee actually approves those. And the moving of the public comment section was at Mrs. Taylor's request. It used to be before that, and she had requested it be moved after, so she could speak regarding, hold on, regarding the reports that came through, like Mr. Rourke's. So that's why that was moved. Alderman Sevanik?
Thank you, Mayor. Are we moving on to the consent agenda?
Yes.
I have not done this since, I think, we started this. But there are no dollar amounts, so we could approve the entire consent agenda, and that would be approving the minutes of Common Council six, seven, twenty-one, approve the Board of Public Works recommendations of a street use permit for the Prey to Lights on July 3rd, and approve the street use application for Twisted Piston Scholarship Cruisin' for Thursday, August 19th, and then also the Planning Commission's recommended approvals of special use permits, one for 1,600 Midway Road for the playground expansion that we had the public hearing for, and the certified survey map of 330 and 328 Wyndhamvego Avenue.
Second.
So motion, there's a motion in a second by Alderman Tom Grady. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Oh, hold on. We can do it by machine rate number.
We're so used to doing it in the other offices.
They can over-year them, huh?
I know.
Here we go.
We forget it.
Yeah, which button?
The plus or the minus? I don't think it'll let you push them all.
Oh, wait a minute.
Maddie, is yours not working? Okay.
Motion carries seven, one.
Oh, shit. I put you on the phone.
Now we're going to bleep you on the recording.
I know, but the prompter should put the words.
I got you, Mark.
Okay, thank you. Mark is requesting that it's both. Yeah. So I do have to recognize that.
Okay. So the motion carried eight, zero. Item I is action items. Do we have a motion for the accounts payable and payroll? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of June 4th through June 17th, 2021, in the amount of $12,780,923.12.
There's a motion in a second by Alderman Ted Grady. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight, zero.
Good job, Mark.
When we did our test vote, we had a vote, a three-way tie of three people for, in favor, three people abstaining, and three people opposed, without planning it that way, it just ended up that way. Item two is the renewal beverage operators. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the renewal of the beverage operators license applications for the 2021 through 2023 licensing period as listed under approved in the deputy clerk's memo dated June 17th, 2021.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
So motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight, zero.
Item three is the Whiting paper mill demolition. Would you, Alderman Sevanik? Oops, I keep forgetting I have to press this.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a recommended motion from staff, and therefore... Therefore, I'll make a motion that the Common Council approve the contracts with Best Enterprise LLC for the initial demolition of the Whiting Mill for the base cost of $193,500, with the regulated waste to be billed per unit as quoted upon paying any invoice directly billed the owner of records and place the unpaid charges against the property.
Is there a second? So a motion in a second by Alderman Schmidt. Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. Sam, we just heard from the public that a little city like Hilbert got granted to tear down an old cheese factory. It's only been seven weeks since the fire. Have we looked into any type of state or federal grants?
We have looked into or had had some conversations with WDC. But certainly, there's a lot of grant opportunities, both for the demolition as well as the redevelopment and investment. So it's kind of weighing those options. We have looked a little bit into the EPA funding. We're actually looking at also submitting an RFP for just general community grants to do environmental Phase 1 and Phase 2 analysis. So there's lots of things that we're looking into. I know the cheese factory was mentioned tonight. I wrote it down, circled it. We will see what type of grant that did receive.
So this isn't premature. If we move forward with the demolition of the property, does that... we can't apply for grants then, can we?
This property has a lot going on with it. I will state it in that fashion. There's an existing tail race that goes through the property that feeds... fed an old water wheel. There's not a whole lot of plans on the building due to, you know, the age of the building. So there's a lot of aspects with that. The reason we broke it out into Phase 2, as we noted, is we have a long road ahead of us. There's no action by the RDA to be redeveloping this property. And basically, this initial phase is to stabilize the site, stabilize the community, the area. You know, there's still the fencing up. There's still being incident calls taken on this property. We do feel that it is a safety concern in its current condition. And there's a lot of unknown questions. So kind of this initial phase of what we're looking at doing is getting this site to a stable condition to be able to investigate how we need to move forward and potentially looking at, you know, those conversations with the railroad, the conversations with the DNR, the conversations with the Army Corps. So there's a lot of conversations that are happening there. So again, I don't think it's premature to be moving forward in this aspect. I think it's a good first step to be able to figure out what does come next and how do we make that happen.
But this is demolition. Is this premature that we could be applying for some grants for the demolition once the demolition's done and the site's cleaned up? At that point, we can't apply for the... any type of cleanup grant.
And again, we can look into grants. But grant writing is also... That's a full-time job in itself, too. So again, we do not have a grant writer on staff. So again, I cannot guarantee that even if there is a grant that we have the staff time, the availability to write that grant. Like we noted, you know, this will be directly paid, billed to the owner. Again, we have that assumption based upon the back taxes that it likely will go against the property. And we recognize that. But we have a lot of service calls out there currently. We have a lot of issues, and I think they're going to continue to get worse. And this is that good first step to make sure we can move forward and answer those questions.
I think we've protected the interest of the city by fencing in the property. Now, if somebody wants to go in there and they get hurt or something, signs up that, you know, trespassing. So I think the city has pretty much covered our bases as far as... We don't own the property, but to help the public. And last week, I asked a question to the attorney about the LLC, if we can... through the court system or something, if we can get into that. And it sounded like there wasn't. So any... it's $200,000. You say it's going to be billed to the LLC. But last week, we heard that there's no hope of recouping any dollars from that. So if the city puts in $200,000 at this time, we probably won't recoup that money. Is that correct?
So again, we're looking at a lot of different aspects with this. We did feel, again, we were working with the development group prior to the fire to repurpose the building. And even through those conversations, because of the nature of the building, where it's being built, the historic costs of it, there were likely going to be conversations regarding creating a TIF district to assist in that. So again, we recognize that, you know, we want to keep costs down. But at the same aspect, we do want to move this community forward. And we feel that, again, I think it was shared in a past example, you know, looking at what that debt is on that property. And that's not even looking at grants or any entities forgiving their interest in that property. You know, through redevelopment and through that TIF district, we can start to pay that cost back.
Okay. And also, you feel there's some rather immediateness into the situation here. But then we have the building across the street that was burnt down July 22nd, 1964. And the windows are all broke out. There's kids over there at times on the side of the dam right over here. And but there doesn't seem to be any... And we've heard from the developers at the Gilbert site that that property...
Getting a little off-topic here.
They... that there's some... So I'm just trying to tie this together that if we're looking at commercial properties that are dilapidated and have a safety issue, we're not paying attention to all of them throughout the city the same way that we're doing with this property. So I would hope your office would look into that situation and help clean that up or stabilize that property, too. With the grant situation, there was a... The plant was powered by hydro power in 1882, and that continued to about 2,000 with the hydro and the Whiting Paper Mill. Now, certainly, I saw in the paperwork here that we are looking at costs about filling that raceway in. And have we had any communications with the utility? Minasha Utility has to have a green initiative to further... It mandated by the federal government to help with the less... with the carbon load to reduce that. So I wondered if we had any conversations with the Minasha Utilities. And they always said that they needed a 10-foot, a 9-foot drop. And between the government canal and the natural river, there's a 9 and 1/2-foot drop for that hydro operation there. So let's see. We would build a beautiful 5, 6, 8-story development there. As in Appleton, at the old Fox Mills in the flats, they kept the original hydro with that plant, still operates today. And it helps with their green initiative. And it helps also to offset the cost of their electricity that they sell back 24 hours a day into the grid system. So I think this is a unique factor that we have at this plant. And you can always build over the top of something like that. And when we had WPPI at our last meeting talking to us, myself and Alderman Sevenik, it brought that hydro initiative up to them. And they said they would look back. He said he would look back into it because Alderman Sevenik keeps sending us, at least myself, videos and the update with hydro power and how it has changed so much, in fact, just in the last five years. So I would hope that instead of just filling in that raceway, that we would maybe work with the utility or the developer to put... Wouldn't it be great to have a beautiful 8-story building there and have it's run on green technology? And I would hope that would be some sort of an initiative for that developer to want to do that. Because not too soon, we're going to all be responsible for our carbon footprint. And I think with the federal government, with mandates coming forward, and this might be an opportunity to get ahead of that a little bit, too. So would it be... your office would have a talk with the utility? Or is that something you want from the council?